I'd like to call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present and also Trustee Miller joining us via WebEx. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Just a couple of things to report tonight. If you don't know it, and perhaps I'm bringing this news to you, but there's an election tomorrow. It's hard to tell with all the ads that are on the TV if it's actually tomorrow or later, but there is an election tomorrow, and polls will open up at 7:00 AM here within the village of Germantown. And we'll have a little bit more follow-up on that from the village clerk during the announcements of forthcoming events in public interest. So please, if you haven't voted already, and if you have, great, thank you. And if you haven't though, please plan on going to your polls and voting tomorrow. It's not just presidential. There's a whole docket of people that are running from federal to state to local and so on. So please go and vote tomorrow. Next item I have to announce is there was an outbreak of a positive test for one of our employees at the public library. And because of that, we're looking to close it for standard hours, but there still will be the curbside pickup and drop-off available like it was earlier during the shutdown. So it'll be very similar in effect, but you will not be able to go inside the library until the time is passed. Are we going with 10 days, 14 days? Mr. Administrator?
At this point, I can't give a firm date because there are some other employees who were exposed who are waiting for tests. If they test positive, that could extend it. So I would say hopefully within 10 to 14 days, we'll be able to open, but it could be longer than that.
All right, but updates will be available on the website.
Updates will-
So we can go on to the next item, which is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee and department reports. And we'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with Trustee Zabel.
General Government Finance will meet on the 16th at 6:00 PM in this room.
All right, thank you. Trustee Miller.
Public Safety Minutes are in, and we begin on Monday, December 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will meet-
Reports they'd like to bring forward. Trustee Zabel.
Does anybody know about the trysters Friday for the chamber? I think it's sir-going. Do we have any updates on that?
If I could add, the chamber has distributed some information about the Christmas festivities coming up. They are planning with the Germantown Fire Department a reverse parade similar to was done for the 4th of July. We are beginning the process of, the chamber is beginning the process of decorating the Christmas tree over by the library, and they are planning that. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but that information did go out last week, and we'll see if we can get that on the Village website and Facebook page to get that information out to folks.
Does the chamber has a website too, correct?
They do, and I believe that they have posted it on their website.
I thought it was like 14th or 15th, something like that.
It sounds right.
Announcements of forthcoming events, public interest committee or department reports. No? Then we'll go on to the next item, which is-
We did it, right?
I'm sorry, the village clerk for election update. Thank you, Trustee Zabel. Let me skip right past her, wasn't I?
So yes, there is an election tomorrow. Regular polls are open at 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM tomorrow, so they can go to their regular site. If you have a question about where your poll location is, you can look at myvote.wi.gov or call the clerk's office. Will be a very busy day tomorrow. I do want to say thank you to the election officials. So if you go out and vote tomorrow, when you go out and vote, make sure you say thank you to your election officials. They're working very hard. All the village employees have somehow pitched in for this election. It's such a big deal. All departments are helping and assisting in some way, from Police Department to Fire Department to DPW, to trustees, to the Finance Department and Engineering. Everybody is assisting in some way. Thank you to all of them. And to the poll locations at Bethlehem, American Legion, Life Church, and Crossway Church. Right now, the village has 14,759 registered voters. Of those, 4,440 have voted in person already, and a total of 9,689 to be counted tomorrow. And this is dependent on tomorrow's mail and what comes in the drop box. So it's a very busy day. We've already seen 66% voter turnout. And just a little bit of comparison, in November of 16, there were 4,622 absentee ballots cast. So there's been quite a turnout already. It will be a very long day here at the Village Hall. I did meet with Police Department last week and went over observer information, so we're prepared for that as well, for observers that will be coming out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, non-
Have an insert with every single absentee ballot that was mailed to tell them to bring it to the Village Hall. We even had pictures and diagrams to assist them to get that in the right drop box. We will be checking that drop box throughout the day, or they could just bring them right in. We do have village employees that are working with each chief at each location. So if an absentee ballot is dropped off at the poll location, we have employees going to pick them up at various times throughout the day. So, good question.
Trustee Zabel.
I just want to set the numbers. You said only 4,000 people have voted so far?
No.
Is that 9,000 people have voted so far? We have 4,000 left.
9,689 have voted so far. 4,440 were in person here at the Village Hall.
Okay.
Trustee Myers.
Good question.
I just want to give a thank you out to village clerk who was on TV the other day and showing different things in regard to election, and she did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. We do have one item listed under this, but before we get to Item A, if there is anyone else that would like to bring anything else before this board, non-related to Item A, now is the time to do so. Is there anyone wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance on items other than what is listed as Item A? Anybody on the web? If not, then we can go to Item A, which is Citizen Input Public Appearance for Village of Germantown Providing Village of Richfield with Water Sewer Utilities. Before we bring people forward, I did receive two communications in regards to this item. One that was sent to us from Ms. Jan Miller. Is Jan online with us tonight?
No.
And in that case, I will-
Wait.
Jan, would you like me to read what you've sent, or do you care to state it yourself?
I would state it myself.
Okay.
Your other hundred first.
Before you go? All right. I do also have a letter from the Washington County Board Chairman, Don Crevel. He's here tonight. Don, would you like me to read this, or would you like to come forward?
You can read it now. I'll make a comment there.
Okay. We did receive a communication, which is from Don Crevel, which is a water, I'm sorry, Washington County Board Chairman. It's dated today, and it's in regards to the expansion of sewer and water to the Village of Richfield. First of all, thank you for allowing me to attend your meeting to advocate my support for the expansion of the Village of Germantown Sewer and Water to the Village of Richfield. The economic development of Washington County is very important to all of its citizens, no matter what community directly benefits from it. The increase in net new construction and the increase in property values that it brings leads to lower county tax rates for the entire community. Washington County is a team, and every municipality must work together in order to enrich the community as a whole. As much as we want to attract business to Washington County, we also need to manage the growth. Washington County is rated the number-one county in Wisconsin for quality of life, and we need to work together to maintain that distinction. I advocated for and supported the change in our county government to a county executive with this in mind. The sewer and water resource should be expanded to the Village of Richfield. This will allow for the continued development of the I-41 Highway 45 corridor. The Village of Richfield will fund a large amount of the infrastructure expansion, and the additional revenue from the sewer district will go back to the Village of Germantown, just as it would with any new customer. This is a win-win proposition for both communities. The development of the property adjacent to the Quick Trip in the Village of Richfield and the economic developments it will bring will be felt countywide. Employees will relocate to the area. Money will be spent at local establishments, and the Village of Germantown will be able to reap the benefits of the economic expansion of their neighbors. I believe that the development of the Village of Richfield property will enable the continued expansion of the I-41 Highway 45 corridor and enable Washington County to maintain our quality of life. The Village of Germantown to uphold their mission and vision as a neighborly community and for the Village of Richfield to maintain their country way of life. Thank you, Don Crevel, which is the Washington County Board Chairman. Don, would you like to come forward and add anything to that? Just come to the podium, please. Phil, can you make sure that microphone is on, please? Thank you.
Thank you, President Walter. Thank you, trustees, for allowing me to speak. This expansion of the sewer and water to Village of Richfield will enable development along the corridor of I-41, 45. It's important that we maintain corridors for our economic development so we don't encroach upon the regular residential areas. At least we won't affect them generally. But having this development brings so much economic boom to both communities. This, like I said in the letter, is a win-win. This is something that I would advocate strongly to have this happen. This will enable us to continue on that corridor, and that's one of the most important things to be, to make certain that we do not encroach upon residential area. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, and thank you for the communication. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward in regards to Item A, Village of Germantown Providing Village of Richfield with Water Sewer Utilities?
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you very much. I'm reading President Walter and Germantown Village Trustees. My line is to be quiet tonight and urge you to know on Item 16, Village of Germantown Providing Village of Richfield with Water Sewer Utilities. I believe that the contract with the water sewer between the two villages, Germantown and Richfield, would be a losing proposition. Richfield should be able to fund their own water and sewer. I believe that water is going to be a huge asset in the future, as it is now, I believe. And Germantown should enlarge their water sewer assets and combine water sewer to our old Germantown residents first. My biggest concern is that Germantown has not completed the 2015 land use plan. Our future 2015 land use plan could impact the amount of water consumption within Germantown itself, so therefore I don't believe that it's prudent to give our water sewer assets to Richfield. Continuing on that thought, Germantown does want to attract business. We know that we know how much water is going to be consumed by every certain company that we do attract. And what if the business, it's just an example, what if the business that we do attract is similar to Gail Foods? And we know that Gail Foods is a largest water sewer consumption company in the village. So I think you should consider, Village Board should consider, really, the fact that water is an asset, it's not a commodity, it's expensive. At our last Village Board meeting that you held, there was a person that came to the board and spoke. His name is Chad Mandis-Sandon, and he was with Richfield Company. They are really same companies. I'm sure that he, he was saying that there was a rare 100-incher spot in Richfield. And I'm sure that the reason for his subvention at the Village Board meeting was because he does have a client in mind. Richfield has stated, has said, he did all kinds of research, and that the investment that was being, that they were trying to have to give was about $44 million. I think that they need to research to know how expensive it is. This is not the first time they came to the Village of Germantown and asking for water. In this case, the business is so important to Richfield, and to Washington County, and to this corridor, why does Richfield not pursue their own water sewer? It's also true in a lot of ways, I don't know what they have to say about that, but that in their subdivision, they do not even have water sewer. So my intention is that we should take care of our own water sewer within our Village boundaries for our residents first. It's not the first time that Richfield has come forward, and I don't believe it'll be the last time. I respectfully requesting that the Germantown Village Board listen to your constituents and vote accordingly. I urge you to vote now on this item, and I appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen input or public appearance as in regards to Item A, Village of Germantown Providing Village of Richfield with Water Sewer Utilities? Anyone else wishing to come forward? Sir?
Mr. President, I would just say that I'm here on behalf of Village Board.
Good evening, Mr. President, Village Board. My name is Jim Healy. I'm the village administrator for the Village of Richfield.
Yes, Tom.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Any questions? Trustee Myers.
Can you give your explanation in regard to why, as the lady just mentioned, about putting sewer and water in a tower on your side? Your thoughts, please?
Well, I think putting a water tower across the street from a water tower is almost everything that's wrong with government. We have an opportunity for us to partner and have a win-win for our community rather than us erecting our own water tower and directly competing with one another.
Thank you.
I would just like to say a point of order here. We never question during public hearings. We have this on the agenda. Can't we talk about it when this comes up under new business?
We can.
Well, this is unheard of.
Okay, well, you just wanted to come forward and answer any questions. You have anything to add, Mr. Healy, in regards to citizen input or this particular topic?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for coming forward. Next item, if there is anyone else that wishes to come forward? If there is no one else, we'll go on to the next item, which is Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve A to D through D.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded for Consent Agenda approval of Items A through D. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve?
I just have one question on the minutes.
Trustee Zabel.
When they talked about the citizens who came forward, did, under the Net Store comments from Law &amp; L, I know that she wanted sewer and water, but was she against also providing the sewer and water to Richfield? I don't remember.
On Consent Agenda or back on 6A?
Under the minutes, under the-
Okay, I'm sorry. In regards to last meeting?
Yeah. I know that she wanted, my memory is that she lived in the subdivision to the north up there.
Rockfield Road.
Yeah. And she was wondering about getting sewer and water, but I thought she also commented about being against providing water and sewer to Richfield.
She did. She did.
So there's a minutes need to reflect that also?
Okay.
So is it your motion then to pull the minutes for that correction and vote on the rest of the agenda for Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to pull then Item A. Any other discussion on Items B through D? No other discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Item A. Trustee Zabel.
We hold the minute with the changes under Village Providing Germantown Water and Sewer Net Store comments by Law &amp; L, that she was against the extension but wanted sewer and water.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to amend it. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. All items under Consent Agenda are now covered, so we'll go on to the next item, which is Unfinished Business. Item A, Notice to Proceed on Site Preparation and Groundwork for Construction of Elevated Storage Tank, TID #8. For some more information and background, I'll turn it over to the village administrator, Steve.
Thank you. What we're requesting here is what I would characterize as a technical adjustment to an action the board took at their last meeting regarding the construction project for the water tower up on Gateway Crossing and Rockfield Road. The board authorized approval of the contract, but asked us to wait until after the November 16th meeting to execute the contract. The adjustment that we're requesting is that you would authorize us to issue a notice to proceed to the contractor so that they could begin work on the foundation, and only that part of it. And the foundation is not affected by the decision on whether or not to provide water and sewer to the Village of Richfield. So it would allow the contractor to get some work started before winter closes in and get that part of the construction done, or moving anyways. But it would not have any impact on other decisions that are coming before the Village Board.
Motion to approve unfinished business, A.
Motion made and seconded. Trustee Wing.
There is a cost difference. It's just minimal, right? What is the cost difference between, if we go with the larger tower?
The bid documents, the bid specifications that were sent out for the project included a slightly larger foundation, so that is baked in to the project. The Public Works Director estimated that the differential would have been less than $5,000, so not a significant amount in the scope of the project. But that is not, it was not bid as an alternative, so it is, the foundation is sized, is set within the bid specifications at this point.
All right. Further discussion? No further discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is New Business. Start with New Business. Item A, Conditional Use Permit Application to Encroach Into the 25-Foot Wetland Setback Pursuant to Section 24.04 Subsection 5 of the Shoreland Wetland Zoning District for MSI General, Agent for Moldmakers Leasing and Investments, LLP, Property Owner and MGS Manufacturing Group, Inc., located at West 190 North 11701 Moldmakers Way.
Full approval.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Zabel.
Basically, this is a drainage ditch that's been defined as a wetland, and we're asking for permission to deal within 25 feet of it.
That's correct. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under New Business is Item B, Conditional Use Permit Application to Encroach Into the 25-Foot Wetland Setback and 75-Foot Navigable Waterway Setback Areas Pursuant to Sections 24.04 Subsection 3, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 5 of the Shoreland Wetland Zoning District for Newman Developments, Inc., Agent for Runwood, LLC, Property Owner, Outlet Number 2 of the Runwood Subdivision.
Full approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is Jeff Rentschoff, Community Development Director.
Hi, Jeff. How are you?
We received word, very much fair, thank you. We received word from the applicant, Newman Developments, that they have withdrawn their application for the conditional use permit within the wetland setback for the Runwood subdivision. They no longer have a need for the conditional use because they have found an alternative location to deposit the excess topsoil that they would have put within the setback area under their application.
Okay.
So no action required on this item by the-
Motion.
Here we have a motion to move to approve and a second. Village Attorney, do we just withdraw the motion?
Table it.
I would just table it.
Made motion to table.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to table. No discussion, one table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under New Business is Item C, Conditional Use Permit Application for 52-Foot Nitrogen Storage Tank for Stephen Buck, Gail Freed's, LLC, Agent for AG &amp; L Dairy, LLC, Property Owner, located at North 116 West 15970 Main Street, Resolution 60-2020, Plan Development District Amendment to Include a Nitrogen Generator Unit.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use application as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Motion made and seconded, discussion. No discussion?
Well, I can't not say something.
You can't lead, huh?
I guess everybody's waiting for me.
Not everybody.
No. They're waiting for me to get it over with. Uh, okay, obviously, I'm opposed to it. It sounds like the plan commission opposed it.
No, it came out of plan commission with no recommendation.
So, we're talking about the continued industrial expansion downtown, not only out but up. And I've been fighting this fight since I was 10 years old, and I can remember when I was just a little boy, the large silos going up on Main Street and the alarm of the residents, my family, all the families in the neighborhood. And it was their contention to say, hey, this is crazy how high these silos are. And we started to become community activists to save the downtown. Bottom line is, we failed. I've failed my constituents. Germantown has failed everybody in Germantown. When you go down and look at the downtown, it's just completely been gutted. Recently, we knocked down four more historic homes. When there was other options on the table to keep the homes standing and build behind them, no, we think it's going to look better destroying our history. Our historic churches, our historic dance hall, everything gone. Nobody does this to a community. It's terrible. But I understand that I'm on the losing end of this, and I'll make this short. The last time they came forward with taller silos, or the four silos west of here, it was about 10 years ago, the citizens got together and we limited those silos. There was a condition that Gales had to meet with the residents to discuss noise issues and other pollution issues. People are worried about their groundwater out there. They inject chemicals into the ground, toxic chemicals, according to the EPA. There's some health issues of residents downtown that are coming to the surface. There's a lot of issues there, and Gales refused to meet with the neighbors. Instead, they built the 45-foot.
What year was this?
This was during Kopinski's era. He made the recommendation that they had to sit down with the neighbors. You were on the board at the time. And if you remember, they said that would be a circus. We're not doing that.
That was John Gale, correct?
Yeah, it was a different ownership, but you can see the management style is the same. This tank and this noise problem, they promised would be fixed by October. We're here in November. You know, it's always continually, a lot of misinformation and a lot of promises to neighbors that never come forward. Now, we're only talking about seven feet here, so I'm not going to talk about this too much longer. Most of you on this board favored this great expansion recently, so I don't think you're going to be offended by another seven foot on a silo. But I am voting against it. I thank the plan commission for not going in all for this and starting to listen to the residents. And I would recommend that we do not vote for it.
So, then you would be in favor of the noise that's now being caused by the nitrogen being in that area?
No, there's an option. There's an option for four smaller silos, from what I understand.
Which would be expanded across the multiple parts of the property? This is put in one area? Have you gone out and looked where this is being proposed?
Yes, I have, and they said that it was going to be hidden. Well, those trees, they, right now, they wouldn't be hidden. There's no leaves on those trees. So, for half the year, it wouldn't be hidden, and for the other half of the year, it would be semi-hidden.
Would you consider that area that they propose it to be under grade from the rest of the area?
Well, the hill, the hill helps.
It's in a lower area of the site?
The hill helps, but the smaller silos would help even more.
So, you would rather have four generating units and whatever possible noise may come off through that, rather than just one that's kind of tucked in a corner behind some rocks? That's what you're leaning towards, based on your argument?
I guess if that's the way you want to phrase it, yes. This was originally promised that the noise would be taken care of, and it hasn't been. And now, they're coming forward with other necessities and saying that the only way they can do this is, and whenever somebody asks the question, well, what else can we do? Well, we don't know. We're using Airgas, and Airgas says we have to use this. Well, look at other manufacturers and come up with something else. I would be willing to go along with it if they're willing, as a conditional use, to release their inspection reports on their injection well since 1970. If they're willing to release their inspection reports and their mechanical integrity inspections on their well that puts toxic chemicals into the ground to Germantown, I would be willing to go along with it.
That's the first time I've heard that. You concluded, trustee Wing? You still have the floor if you want it? Are you concluded? Okay, then I'll recognize trustee Myers.
I was going to say, a while back, this board had to approve what they wanted to do and have an extended parking lot on the backside. And I would imagine, I was at the plan commission meeting the other night when they talked about the alternative, which put four other smaller tanks in that area. But what would happen is, the areas that we gave for them for extra parking would be completely gone. I'm completely against, I'm definitely for this particular asset.
That's what happens when you try to shove tons of industry into a small area, right up against homes and everything else. This is what we, the citizens have been saying for decades, it's going to happen. We got truck traffic lined up on the freeway because there's not enough room for anybody to get anywhere, and there's hazards left and right from toxic chemicals to steam to the traffic. And this is what you have all created. I didn't create it. Now, you're looking for me for solutions.
I'm not looking for you for solutions, and I thought I had the floor, Mr. President. And to be honest with you, along with that particular part, by having the Airgas agreement, from what I understand from that meeting, is that we'd have less trucks coming in there because they wouldn't have to come in as often.
There wouldn't be the need of two deliveries a day of nitrogen?
Right, whatever. And so, this is another situation in regard to the noise aspect, but I'm voting in favor of this.
Further discussion? Trustee Zabel.
Oh, well, let me tell you, I brought up the fact of the nitrogen gas and liquid nitrogen. I went on the site and only to find out that back in January of 2006 at Texas A&amp;M, they were doing the same thing. They were using liquid nitrogen to trade nitrogen gas. As far as that, the valve stuck, and when the valve failed, the tank failed. There was enough force of the explosion to propel the tank through the ceiling immediately above it, solder the reinforcing concrete beams immediately below it, and blow out the walls of the laboratory. So, something tells me, everybody tells me this is safe, and it's probably safe to use the gas to move the food. If the valves fail, and this tank is sitting out in the middle of nowhere, I got a 52-foot rocket going into the air. I really have a problem. I mean, do I live with noise, and do I live with a little bit more of a possible explosion? I mean...
Trustee Zabel, I think your chance of explosion is a little bit, of sounding a great alarm that it may not be so necessary. Nitrogen as a whole is an inert gas. When it's released, it absorbs into the atmosphere as part of being, part of the atmosphere. The only way an explosion is going to happen is, you're talking about a pressure explosion and nothing to do with an igniting of a gas.
It's not that when you go from liquid nitrogen to gaseous nitrogen, it increases at a 1.6 to 1 ratio. So, in that time, if the valves don't work, that gas builds up, and believe me, if enough to blow up a reinforced concrete wall and blow out stuff at Texas A&amp;M, I would think there's enough force behind it.
What year was that?
In 2006. I have the document here if you want to read it.
I believe you. You can find anything on the internet.
The hope here is that, one of the presidents, I asked them, why did they put it in that location? They told me they wanted to try to keep it away from truck traffic. If you look at the village, you look at everything they're putting around to try to protect this thing. It is a liquid propellant. It can cause damage. Right now, you have the thing of, yes, they come and they fill up their liquid tanks. They're going to continue to fill up their liquid tanks, just not as much. So, they're not going to totally take away the noise. There's going to be at a limited, a sort of period of time. Planning Commission did deny the 52-foot towers, and I'm going to sit with Planning Commission.
They did not deny it. They don't have the right to deny it. They had to bring it forward with no recommendation to this board.
Well, what the minutes of planning commission says, recommendation, deny the approval of the conditional use permit for the 52-foot tower of the proposed generation. That's what's in the minutes that I'm reading. So, it says it denies.
Yeah, they voted against it. They voted against it, and then came forward, I think it was a 2-2 or by one vote.
No, no, 4-3.
This is a community development director, Renslow.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to interrupt and simply say that Assistant Planner Emily Zant has information in her presentation that would address some of the issues that have been raised so far by some of the trustee discussion. I'd also point out that we have a number of experts available this evening from Gale Foods and Airgas who can directly respond to the questions regarding their proposed facility. So, I would ask if the board would allow Emily to proceed with her presentation and then bring forward the experts from Gale Foods and Airgas who might address some specific questions at that time.
Okay, I'm fine with Associate Planner Zant presenting her slides. Go ahead.
Thank you.
We've seen all this. Talk about extending the meeting.
Now, the planning department, Gale Foods Plan Development District, approved last year, several programs and commitments were made by Gale Foods Board of Property, including the addition of a night generation facility. This application for the project, so you break the promise, one is the site's final review is approved by the planning commissioners, the second is the plant development district amendments. The specific with permit, the on-site nitrogen generation facility and temporary use for the food production plan will give us a increase. The nitrogen generation facility will deliver sufficient quantity of nitrogen to meet the normal operating demand. There are some occasions, however, where additional liquid nitrogen would be needed would need to be delivered, including the occasional maintenance or repair of the generation facility and a temporary increase in the demand for production purposes. Gale Foods would need to rely on the tanker delivery as a backup supply nitrogen in these situations. So, the existing nitrogen storage tank would remain in place as backup supply for operation.
So, you're still...
The number of workers put nitrogen to the site by tanker trucks, which is never to be reduced. Gale Foods anticipates approximately one truck delivered per week, where currently there's approximately two to three tanker trucks delivered per day. The proposed nitrogen generation facility will be located in the state parking area on the east side of the property, South of Farnwell Avenue. The proposed portion of the proposed facility would need to be required setback as by Gale Foods PDP. The location is suffered from Adalac Avenue and lines so close to mature trees. These images show the location of the proposed nitrogen facility along Highway 145. It would be hit by the trees. This is just showing some of the parts of the location. And then, looking itself east along Highway 145. Also, the neighborhood, they closed up your 6-foot tall security fence, including barbed wire and a tap. It's 52 inches of height. It will be located on the outside of the building and the north and west sides of the property for protection from the heat. So, let's see here. So, the proposed nitrogen generation facility does require the use of a coal box, which has 52 feet of operating. The initial use permit is required as this is set to the Allen London Industrial District in order for an accessory structure to exceed 45 feet in it. Set that requires Gale Foods representatives of alternative options. They'll turn to options, and I will let Steve Buck from Gale Foods speak to this a little further in a moment. But the alternative option would essentially create four of these equipment complexes, and so it would take up four times the footprint of this proposed facility. Just some planning and development staff comments, the set of facilities made as part of the Gale Foods PDP and expansion plans approved in 2018, the project will reduce noise related to nitrogen delivery, and the proposed location is well-screened at suffered from Main Street and Tadalec Avenue. The last element of the proposed generation system is the air compressor, which will have a noise level of about 83 decibels, that's three feet from the unit, will be approximately 55 decibels at the property line. Further, the proposed location of the project is well-screamed at suffered from Main Street and Tadalec Avenue. Although the 52-foot coal box will descend beyond the height of the trees and will be visible from the property's diameter, which is six feet, is significantly smaller than the diameter of the existing silos on the site. Further, the project will be located approximately 225 feet north of Main Street, minimizing the visual impact on Main Street itself. The fire department did indicate that they do have the correct equipment to respond in the case of an emergency associated with this facility. I'd also like to point out that the required fire access to Farnwell Avenue, which was included as part of the 2019 expansion plan, will not be impacted. The nitrogen generation facility is indicated on the image with a blue star, and the access location is certainly best. The planning commission did work on an approval of the Gale Foods Plan Development District amendments to include nitrogen generation facility as a permitted accessory use for the property located on Main Street. The planning commission did vote to recommend denial of the conditional use permit for the proposed 52-foot tall coal box silo for the proposed nitrogen generation facility addition to the Gale Foods food production plant on Main Street, subject to one condition. Steve Buck of Gale Foods is with us this evening, so I will turn it over to him for some initial comments and information. We do also have representatives from Airgas available to answer any specific questions you might have related to the nitrogen generation system.
Okay, now, take Emily's turn, Dan.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. My name is Steve Buck. I'm a senior project engineer at Gale Foods. Emily mentioned on the webex with us is David Riddell, senior project manager with Airgas, and Bill Spitzer, technical manager from Airgas and also an expert on nitrogen generation systems. So, at the plan commission meeting on October 12th, we did get some questions from trustees, commissioners, and residents about the project, and those questions fell into three different themes. What are we proposing to install and how does it work? Why do we need the conditional use? Why do we need the conditional use permit to exceed the 45 feet for accessory structures? And how will this benefit the village and its residents? So a couple of slides to go through quickly just to address those. This slide here shows just sort of a quick diagram of simply how the system works. So the nitrogen generation system produces a consistent stream of pure nitrogen gas from the atmosphere. Atmosphere is about 78% nitrogen, 21% oxygen, 1% other gases. So the generation system takes in air from the surrounding atmosphere and uses physical pressure and temperature changes to remove the oxygen and the other gases from the air. And then about 40% of that airflow that's taken in is directed to our manufacturing plant as pure nitrogen gas. And the remaining 60% is returned to the atmosphere. Next slide, please. So the system that Airgas is, would be delivering to us is a standard proven design engineered by them. The system is a collection of equipment that works together to separate the nitrogen out of the air. There's sensors and control systems continuously monitor the equipment 24/7, provide feedback to both Airgas and Gale Foods on the operating parameters. And the installation will be surrounded by a locked fence and protected from parking lot traffic by the concrete traffic bollards surrounding it. Next slide, please. So requesting the conditional use permit for the cold box, which is a fractional distillation column. And this is the part of the system where the nitrogen is separated out from the rest of the air. So air enters through the bottom of the cold box and as it rises, oxygen is separated out from the airstream. Once it reaches the top, the oxygen's been removed and pure nitrogen is collected. The height of the cold box is required to produce the quantity and quality of nitrogen that we need in our plant facility. During plant commission meeting, it was asked if the cold box could be modified to reduce its height. But because of the way that it functions, lowering the height reduces the quality or the quantity of nitrogen that can be separated from the air. So although Airgas does offer smaller onsite nitrogen generators, in order for us to be under the 45-foot height restriction, four generators, each with one quarter of the capacity, would be needed. Next slide, please. So I've just put a graphic here of what that would look like on our property. The space required to accommodate those four separate systems, each with a 45-foot tall cold box, each with two compressors, for a total of eight compressors, is at least four times larger than what's currently proposed. So if we tried to put this installation in our Main Street facility, it would consume so much space, we wouldn't be able to operate. We wouldn't be able to deliver raw materials into our batching area or have traffic flow through our site. Next slide, please. So I wanted to talk too about what the benefits to the village are. So right now, in the past year, we've had about 750 tanker trucks deliver liquid nitrogen to us, which is about two to three times a day. After the completion of this installation, that will drop to once a week or less.
Whether that's four or one tower?
Yes.
Okay, so the amount of towers doesn't increase traffic like it was referred to earlier?
The amount of towers does not.
Yeah, if there's four towers or if there's one towers, the truck traffic still is reduced at the same rate.
True, but if we install four towers, we can't operate.
No, I understand spacing because you put it right in the middle of your parking lot, but there's land and other areas.
You said that 60% of the other gases that are taken out are released into the atmosphere? What other gases comprise?
That 1% is other gases like argon, neon, helium, other atmospheric gases. So nothing else other than atmospheric gases are taken in and nothing other than electricity is used for the separation. And then those same gases are released either to the plant or back to the atmosphere.
So when you say that they're released into the plant or the atmosphere, are there any impacts on health? Or could that, does that possibly damage our ozone layer? Or is it bad for everyone, people or everything?
Simple answer is no. It's the exact same gases that we're breathing right now.
That you're releasing.
Mm-hmm. We are not adding anything to the system.
They're taking it out of the air and releasing the ones they don't want.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned that the ones that they don't want, what the implications are to everything around us.
I can probably have Bill Spitzer from Airgas comment on that a little bit more. But the proportion that we are, that this system is compressing and using is minuscule compared to the bulk of the atmosphere around us.
Mr. Hudson?
I live in Manominee Falls.
Mr. Wang?
Steve, there is always concern with safety. You know, you can imagine, you got all these different chemicals. I'm, I don't think this is going to cause any concerns, but there's other. You have toxic chemicals that the EPA says you do release into the air and you inject into the ground. And there's incidences that occurred that we're all aware of, where I was, I lived next to your factory for many years, where there was a leak and the area was supposed to be evacuated and it wasn't. And weeks after it happened, the neighbors were all notified that we were in danger. Our lives were in danger because we weren't evacuated. This is a fact. It's not something I'm exaggerating. It's not something I'm making up. Fire Department knows about it. Dean, you know about it as well.
I know.
And there's other, there's other incidences that continually occur with runoff of strange chemicals and other things. Would you be willing, because the last time you guys had wanted larger silos, we just asked that you sit down with the residents and speak with them and you refused. Would you at least, if I put a provision in here that say, okay, we're talking about seven feet, we'll allow this silo with the condition that, you know, you, once a year, you set aside a date to meet with residents about safety issues, safety concerns, and you ask, they get to ask the questions. You get to show them, when they ask for what chemicals are being released into the sewer crate next to their house, they're told. When they ask what's being injected into ground, they're told. When they ask for inspection reports, they're given them because the EPA is very inconsistent in not reporting these things. When they ask what kind of chemicals were released in the 1970s, you kept full disclosure. Can't the neighbors at least have that transparency?
Trustee Wang, I would say that I certainly understand what you're asking for, but as a senior project engineer at Gale Foods, I can't make a commitment to you as in my position.
This is the unbelievable part because it's been this way for years. And, you know, the residents have their concerns about safety and they hear these scare, this scare that we needed to evacuate the area or their child's playing and finds this green water running down the street. All we want is you to talk to us and assure us of safety and we get responses like that is, oh, no, well, we can't do that. That's what bothers.
I did not say we can't do it.
He doesn't have the ability to provide that.
It's happened before where they didn't. You guys all know, we had a motion where they needed to sit down with neighbors and they said it would be a circus. I'm hoping maybe that we can table this and if Gales is willing, if your executives are willing to sit down with neighbors at least once a year, at very least, and answer the safety questions that the neighbors are concerned about.
Other questions? Any other information?
I had a couple of the things in here that Emily had talked about, that we'll have 700 less tanker trucks a year on the streets. There's a positive CO2 impact to this change as well, taking the equivalent of about 1,500 cars a year off the road. As well as the noise that's generated by the system is much lower than currently from the truck unloading. And I think as Emily had mentioned, it'll be about 55 decibels at our property line, which is about 10 decibels less than the allowable limit and is about the noise from a conversation in a quiet room. And if I may, if we could also have Bill come online and he could certainly answer any questions about safety as it relates to the nitrogen generation facility.
That would be fine. You can first start with the concern that trustee Zabel brought forward.
We have to allow him.
My name is Bill Spitzer. Apparently my camera is pointing at my desk and I'm not sitting at that point, but I could not hear, can you hear me first?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I could not hear the concerns addressed by trustee Zabel, I believe is the name you used.
Correct.
President Walter, I'd be happy to address the questions that he has.
Perhaps trustee Zabel can state them again and have the microphone a little bit closer to you also.
Can you hear me now?
I cannot.
Speak right, put yourself like right here.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Very good. The concern I have is I don't know if you're aware of what occurred at Tetches Aine University, where they were drawn from liquid nitrogen to nitrogen gas and one of the valves stuck and the tank blew up.
I'm not aware of that event, no, sir.
Okay. Basically, what it says is that because of the liquid to gas expansion ratio, a tremendous amount of force can be generated. The liquid nitrogen is rapidly vaporized in an enclosed space.
So that is correct. The extension of liquid to vapor nitrogen is a high volume change. And if that volume, there's a gas that's creating the vaporization is contained in a hotter space, then the pressure can increase. In this system, there we have liquid nitrogen present. We have multiple pressure relief devices also present. We have pressure valves, which are spring loaded devices that open and when the pressure is reduced down to the set point of the valve, then the valve will close. And in the event, in the unlikely that that pressure relief valve does not function, we have set at a higher pressure a rupture disc that will open and not reclose, releasing all the pressure in the system if we have an overpressure effect. One more point, the set point of that rupture disc or, sorry, the set point of that rupture disc is at or below the pressure at which the vessel was tented during its manufacture. If we ever exceed the test pressure, it was pretty close during the manufacture.
Okay, to that, apparently that's what happened in Tetches is one of these valves stuck. And when that stuck, the tank blew up and blew out the walls of our laboratory.
I think that we were just looking up that same, I believe it's the same event you were talking about. It sounds like the equipment was modified in an unapproved way during that event.
Now, what was that?
Was it unmodified?
Everything that we do on the site follows the ASME or American Society of Mechanical Engineers guideline and instructions. And all of our vessels are built to those rules. And the pressure relief devices that are attached to the vessels also follow those rules.
Okay, well, just wanted to make it aware that everybody always assumes things to be safe. Everybody always designs things to be safe. But in reality, there can always be a moment in time when things don't work. And when they don't work, it becomes quite a mess. The only thing I'm assuming and the place in Tetches wasn't in an enclosed space. Here, I'm doing everything outside and I have nothing to enclose. So if this thing does blow, it's going to go into the air and go all around. And if that tank goes into the air for any particular reason, it's going to do a lot of damage to the neighborhood.
If that tank goes into the air, you're correct. And we're going to do everything, other than allow that to happen. We have 480 of these plants around the world. Forty-four of them are this particular size. We've been putting them in since the late 1980s and have had no such incidents that you're describing. We inspect them frequently and the relief valve assembly, which I was speaking earlier, is part of that inspection. So even if somehow somebody gets in there and tamper with it, we catch it at the next interval.
Are they tied to any type of computer sending device or warning system?
We have pressure level sensors on all of those vessels. And there are alarms that go out if the pressure gets too high. Yes, sir.
That's all the questions I have for now. Any other questions for the representative from Airgas?
I would just like to make a motion.
No other questions for him?
Not for him.
Trustee, Brian?
Yeah, Bill, you said you got 480 of these systems around the world, 44 of this size. What are the other sizes?
This is something that we call a size seven. And it's the largest of the models that we offer. There are sixes, fives, fours, and even a couple of size twos.
How tall is a, how tall is a size six?
I'm sorry, did you repeat that?
How tall is a size six?
It is still over 45 feet tall.
You got any, you got anything that's below 45 feet?
One would get down to the size five, I believe, David, is 45 or smaller or shorter.
And how many of those tanks do I need to generate this amount of nitrogen?
You would need four of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for representative from Airgas? Trustee Zabel? No? No other question?
Yeah, this is trustee Miller.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the release of the gases into the air. If you're talking about nitrogen, are you saying that the release of gases are more oxygen rich than what was there before?
Yes, the.
Exhausting the barrier is about 35% oxygen compared to the 21% oxygen in the, in the fuel line here. It disintegrates all the air within. The whole extent of the exit is back to full air concentration, 41%. Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for representative from Airgas? Trustee Zabel?
I can't find it here, but it's part of the public hearing. There was a gentleman who wrote a letter who asked about a valve on the side of it. I don't think that was ever answered. It was part of the public hearing and a letter that came in. And I don't see it in the backup material here. But there's something about a valve and they wanted to know what that release valve was and what it was for. I don't see his letter in our backup material.
I'm not familiar with that question.
I recall that you were referring to trustee Zabel. I believe it was talking to the muffler that was part of the, where the release of the gases that are returned to the atmosphere are.
If you look at the rendering, there's only shows one valve on the tank itself.
Now, he had a question I know that didn't get answered at Planning Commission, but some type of a velving on the side of it and he wanted to know what it was for.
I'm not seeing anything in, the only valve I see is on the smaller tank. And then there's a muffler, which is probably on the compressor in front of the smaller tank.
I don't see the gentleman's letter as part of the public hearing.
Do you want to point to perhaps what the trustee is referring to? I'm trying to answer, but I'll point out that this is an artist's rendering. The actual site will look a little bit different than that. Not as far as if we're the size and placement, but what all the, that could represent on the side of the vessel, why?
Does Jeff or Emily remember anything about this? I don't remember anything about a valve.
It doesn't come, I don't.
There was a letter from the guy in the public hearing. Maybe, I think it was online, go back to your.
Your concern with the valve then, Art, is it a release valve? Your concern with the valve then, Art, is it, is it a release valve?
Um, my concern was that he, he asked it in, uh, in the public hearing, and I don't think it was answered, that's all.
Oh, it's, okay.
I don't recall a specific question. Um, I can try and look here while you finish discussing, and I can provide that information if I do find it.
Yeah, it's a letter that he sent that was read for the public hearing.
I'll look.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Wayne, would you have something for the representative from Airgas?
Yeah, I guess I do. Um, so we're looking at a picture now of the actual generator system, right there. And all of the various components that go with that silo. If you go to four silos, are, can we put that picture back up? I don't know why they took it down. There you go. If we go with four silos, do you have to repeat, mimic, if you will, all of that other equipment within that gate? Do you have to mimic that four times?
You have to mimic, um, some of the air compressors, which are the green things near the left right?
Okay.
You do have to mimic the green and white, or in Airgas speak, it's teal.
Right.
Teal and white box in the middle that has, um, it's a muffler sitting on top of it, or something.
Okay.
And the gold box would have to be mimicked.
Which is the next white box?
Which is the 52 foot tall piece.
Well, we would go, if we went to four, okay, so they would be four at, at 45 with the addition of those equipment. So if we go back to the picture that Gales presented with four of these, can we go back to that? Okay, back again. Yeah, we're not hitting it. Oh, you had it. It's an overhead view.
That's it.
That's it? So all of that equipment has to be repeated? It looks like there's something extra there. No?
It's probably a copy paste. But most, you, you could say usually two thirds of the equipment.
So maybe not everything that's presented.
Right.
Well, I, we'll just.
I would defer to Airgas to say that they're designing the system.
Oh, okay. Um, all right. I guess then I just have a motion to make, an amendment.
No other questions?
No.
Trustee Baum.
I, I guess it's more of a statement that if my choice is between four 45 foot tall and one 52 foot tall, I'd take the one 52 foot over the four 45s.
I would take it based on it's one compressor versus four.
Well, that's why I'm really ready to make a motion.
Any other questions for, I just wanna make sure that we're clear with the representative from Airgas? No other questions for you? Thank you, sir, for, uh, your answers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Trustee, trustee Wayne?
I would just like, uh, thank you. It was valuable information. Um, I would support this for the exact reasons that, um, Dave Baum just stated, we're only talking seven feet here. But I would like to make an amendment, very similar to the amendment we made with your four silos that went to the west of this, of this current structure, um, that we at least have two meetings, um, where Gales will meet with neighbors and focus primarily on safety issues. Truthfully, I'm not very concerned with Airgas and what they're doing here. I think it's going to be safe. I have other concerns. Lists of concerns, and so do many residents. So, you know, the, for the residents, I would like, uh, to make the motion that Gales has at least two meetings in the next year to discuss safety issues with a small group of neighbors that I can get together. Um, it's very similar to the same motion we made 10 years ago. And, uh, and just to have some transparency in safety.
And so your motion would then include, just so everybody's clear, the two meetings would be every year from this year forward?
No, just, just two meetings within the next year.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the number of meetings that you're looking for.
I don't want it to be perpetual because I think we can find out the information we need to find out.
President Walter.
Before I, before I bring you up, I will need a second. All right, motion made and seconded. I oughta make sure for protocol, then we'll go on discussion.
I need gravity.
The, uh, the president respond to that.
Good evening, Craig Lemieux, CEO of Gale. Uh, I can tell you, from, from a value standpoint, safety for employees and our consumers is our top priority. You know, above financials, above output, et cetera. And we preach that consistently. So I have absolutely no issue with meeting with the residents to talk about safety. No problem. I'm assuming Alex doesn't have a problem with that either. And so we'd love to engage the, the neighbors in that. Um, you know, I mean, there's been discussion around environmental compliance and things of that nature. I can assure you we're in compliance with environmental laws. Uh, when the company was acquired in 2015, part of the diligence for that process is an extensive environmental audit. So I don't have, I haven't read that, I don't have access to it, that would have been probably 2015. But that would have been, you know, hey, that would have, I would have guessed addressed any of your issues, you know, from prior years, which I can't, I can't really speak to. So I would like to focus going forward. I know we have our water tested and things of that nature. So, um, if, if we were not in compliance with that, uh, not only the current executive team, but the, you know, financial sponsors of the company and whatnot, would place that as an absolute necessity to make sure that was addressed. So, uh, no problem with that in concept, and I think, uh, I'll even commit our COO to leaving that, so.
Congratulations. Just one question for you.
Sure.
You said going back, obviously, and, you know, your ownership only goes back so many years, um, do you still though maintain the inspection reports for things like the, um, the wells? The injection wells? I mean, do you, you still have on file reports?
Yeah, I, I'm sure we probably do. Uh, and I'm sure, you know, relative to any question about releasing those kind of things or whatnot is a legal question that I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be prepared to answer.
Okay.
Uh, tonight, but, you know, I think that, I can speak, you know, I'm sure there's public records relative to some of that, which, you know, okay. Yeah, all I can tell you is when, you know, and I've been on the other side of buying companies like that, the last thing you want to do is go buy a company that's got an environmental problem. So it's one of the main issues you do in diligence is to make sure that there are no environmental issues that carry through with the deal, that then the new owner would be responsible for, so.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
And then I would just say last, before you vote, um, you know, I, I appreciate the cooperative spirit of the village. We've certainly tried to develop a better relationship, uh, with the village here. Um, I think there's always room for improvement. And, um, but, you know, I think that's our, that's our desire going forward, that we continue to improve that relationship.
Thank you for that. Trustee Hudson, did you have a question?
Where do you live?
I have an apartment in Menominee Falls, about five minutes down the road here. And, uh, actually, my residency is in Fremont, Wisconsin. So, white best capital of the world.
Yep, it is. Every spring when the lilax bloom.
And anybody that would like a fishing report that goes up there, you're free to give me a call.
Any other questions for Craig? Emily?
President Walter, I did, I did find, um, the question from Mr. Plastak, I believe it is. Um, he was asking about, um, something that appears to be a larger soft pipe on the ventilation cooling air inlet.
Mm-hmm.
Rings of silence. Does that outfield food or air gas staff, um, have? Is there any question?
Mr. President, this is Phil Spitzer.
Yes, sir.
During the exhausting of the product or the air points that we're not going to send to Gale, uh, there is some velocity involved with those. And what we do is run those gases through a muffler or a silencer is to keep the ambient noise down.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Amendment.
An amendment to the motion, correct. Further discussion on that motion to amend. It's the only concern that I have with trustee Wayne's motion, and I don't think it's the wrong thing to do, but it does tend to move the goalpost a little bit. Before, when we had asked on the last development for them to try to fix the noise problem or try to amend the noise problem for nitrogen, they'd come forward with this. What you're asking for could have also been asked at that time as well. It wasn't, and I don't know why. But it does tend to move it, but I do appreciate Craig's willingness to come forward and speak to the residents and be able to, uh, resolve or bring forward any information that you're looking for him to, to talk about or for the residents to learn about through these meetings.
Uh, the reason I didn't is because I was presented with some new information, um, from a resident, which I'm not willing to share publicly. And, um, I have some, some real concerns about some safety issues.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll learn about that or resolve that, uh, through the meetings that are being recommended through this amendment. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Yes?
Mr. President, this is Jeff Wolf, community developer here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out that in the Gale Foods Plan Development District, uh, conditions and resolution, uh, restrictions resolution that was adopted back in September of 2019, Gale Foods has already made a strong commitment, and I'm gonna quote it, to continue involvement and collaboration with the village, the Main Street stakeholders, including residents and business owners regarding future enhancements and improvements to the Main Street area. So I think what trustee Wayne is asking for and what, uh, President Lemieux has offered is consistent, uh, with the Plan Development District that was created last year, and it just continues to further the progress, I think, that we're all making with regard to Gale Foods and Main Street.
All right, and, but it also does put more of a timeframe of two meetings within a year as part of that, that outreach in regards to what seems to be a, a specific concern they have with, um, some release of, of chemicals or something.
Safety issues.
All right, okay, all safety issues. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Well, further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. Back to the motion as amended, just so I make sure before I get into discussion that the motion made did include also, uh, the resolution for the Plan Development District amendment. It did, thank you for that. And that's how they second understood it as well. So, okay, I'm gonna say that's yes. All right, further discussion on the motion as amended, trustee Zabel. Talk into your microphone, please.
There was one other thing brought up in planning commission, and that was the delivery time. Um, that they would only be delivering the, uh, the, uh, the liquid nitrogen during the daylight, uh, from eight to five. I know they did not make the amendment at that time at planning commission, too, they already voted on the tower. So I guess I would add, um, I would make the, put the amendment on the floor to add that, uh, timeframe to this conditional use permit, that the delivery of the liquid nitrogen can occur during the day between eight and five.
That is your motion to amend?
Yes.
I'll second that one.
Motion made and seconded discussion, trustee Baum.
Is there any problem with that timeframe? All we're trying to do is get the sound during the daytime instead of at night.
I defer to the operating folks here.
I think we have, was it nine o'clock? We have Robert Garcia.
Can you go up there and?
Please, so everyone can hear you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Robert Garcia, Vice President of Manufacturing for Gale Foods. I think in the agreement, we had a timeframe that was in there that we agreed to. I don't believe it was, 5:00 PM would be pretty egregious for us. Um, we need a wider range than that. But I think if my recollection is correct, it was 9:00 PM.
Nine.
9:00 PM. And I don't remember if it was, I think it was 7:00 to 9:00 or in that.
What time commission?
It was in the previous agreement.
Oh.
Yeah.
There's a permission in the PDD, and I'm just trying to find it right now.
Yeah, there is some specific time in there.
I have one other question on this, Emily, what, if you could bring back up on the board where the, um, the driveway is that they're gonna come off the monolith?
The nitrogen deliveries, you mean?
No, um, the presidency, she put it up quick, and I didn't. The location that she showed on the map appeared to be different than what I was thinking. I didn't see it on here.
Current on a motion to amend. Trustee Zabel, if it was already listed in the PDD as, as a timeframe being from 7:00 to 9:00, do you still wanna make your motion?
No, it should be, I'm all right. I'm fine, I'll, I'll give you, I'll withdraw my motion.
So you understand it's not 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM?
Very good. If that's all right, we'll, we'll draw it, we already have a fact record to do.
Planters act, have you been able to locate that?
Um, not quite yet. That's the button here.
Okay.
Emily, original, PDD. And again, the, the reduction of deliveries makes this easier for us to deal with in terms of the timeframe, so, you know, whatever Emily has in there is gonna be sufficient, if, even if it is the more restricted time. Um, these deliveries do come from all over the place. I mean, they're coming from Illinois and from other areas, so that's some of the difficulties that we currently enjoy.
Do you just wanna make your motion from, go ahead.
Um, yes, is a PDD, uh, whether, um, delivery of nitrogen is up and down to the size here?
All right, then you withdraw your motion to amend. All right, so we're back to the motion as amended, further discussion.
He has a question to go to him, but I think to put that up, the location.
She showed the site.
The image with the red circle and the blue star. Okay. Right there. Okay, that's fine. This matches.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend. No further discussion. Motion as amended, I'm sorry, thank you. No further discussion? Vote, call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peiper?
Aye.
Trustee Wayne?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Thank you for, uh, your explanation and taking time with us tonight. I very much appreciate it. Next item under new business is new business item D, public utility easements for mold makers' investments LLC.
Ooh, bro.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. Next item under new business is item E, Development Agreement Mole Makers Investments LLC.
Move through.
Motion made and seconded discussion.
Can you write the document for order made?
Okay. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. Last item on tonight's agenda under new business is item F, Village of Richfield Potential Water Sewer Service Agreement. The Village Board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then make reconvenance to open session to take such action as it deems appropriate. The administrator has some information to share in regards to the survey that was out and other information, but if it gets into the point of negotiation or tactics thereof, then we could go into closed session. What I don't want is to openly speak of negotiation. So I would go into closed session if it gets to that point, but I would care for the village administrator to share that information that he has in open. I need your motion.
Does it affect...
For what?
To go into closed session.
After he does his thing?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session after you're with the administrator.
Well, I would like to comment on what the administrator...
I need a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded discussion.
Okay, so what we're voting on now is the administrator will say his findings and give us the summary, and then there's no other discussion? And then we go into private, or can we...
Only if we're talking about negotiation.
Okay.
You can more ask questions that you want of anything that Steve would be presenting. Correct? Okay. Further discussion. Need a roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so I'll turn the meeting over to our village administrator, Steve Cracklum.
All right, thank you. There's two main topics that I'll touch base on while we're in open session. One is, as was mentioned, the results from the survey that the village board requested at our last meeting, and then secondly, an update on the negotiations, just an overview of some pieces of it that I think are, appear to be of interest to the public, in particular just to, so that that information is available. I'll begin with the survey. As we talked about at our last meeting, we did develop an online survey for people to complete. We posted it on the village's website, Facebook page, next door site, and emailed it out to our email lists from the 2050 planning process, as well as our general mailing list from our website. We did have, at the time that we downloaded the results, and I went through 150 people complete, I believe that was from early this morning. Of those 150 respondents, 67 supported providing sewer and water to Richfield, 83 indicated they are opposed. We did ask for reasons for either the support or the opposition. The, of the supporters, the two most frequent reasons selected were that cooperation holds down overall costs. 37 respondents selected that option, and that Richfield will help pay for new infrastructure in Germantown. 22 respondents selected that option. Of those opposed, 35 respondents believed that the village should extend sewer and water service to Germantown residents first, and 20 respondents were concerned that the proposal would have a negative impact on Germantown wells. There was an option for other. 11 responded, selected other, and the comments under that section generally indicated that those respondents are opposed to new development in general in the Holy Hill area. I will make one other side comment, and we can make this information available on the village website as well. I did send to the trustees a letter from a hydrologist who does work for the village of Richfield that was consistent with FOTH Engineering, who works for Germantown's, opinion that as the well that we are putting in place out on Holy Hill does draw from the deep aquifer, and if the well is constructed properly and operated according to standard, you know, SOPs, that it should not have an impact on residential wells in the area. Moving on, just to clarify, we did ask residents if they were Germantown residents. 126 of the respondents are, were Village of Germantown residents. Five were Town of Germantown residents, and 11 were Village of Richfield residents. 80 of the respondents currently receive Germantown sewer and water, 49 do not. Of those who do not, who do not have, currently receive Germantown sewer and water, 21 indicated they would like to receive it, and 32 indicated that they are not interested in receiving sewer or water service. There were, nine of the 150 respondents indicated they have additional questions or would like additional information that was not on the village website. And I'll just hit some of the highlights. There were, we provide an opportunity for additional comments. There were five comments, and I'll say there's some subjectivity to how I report this because I am looking at comments at people and trying to group them into categories that made sense to me. I interpreted five of the comments as being in support of cooperation between the two villages as good government. Seven of the comments were along the lines that they would like to see Germantown residents getting expanded sewer and water service before Richfield, or that Richfield should establish their own water and sewer utilities on their own. There were four comments that were, in general, opposed to additional development in the Holy Hill area. Three comments were concerned about the impact on the water table or individual wells. Couple of respondents indicated Germantown should look at annexing that portion of Richfield, which, as we've heard in prior discussions from the village attorney, is not allowed under state law, since they are already incorporated as a village. Three comments expressed support for providing water to, and sewer to Richfield because it would help hold down or reduce Germantown water and sewer rates. Two respondents indicated that they do not want to be forced to receive water or sewer service from Germantown. And a couple of respondents indicated, encouraged the village of Germantown to take a strong negotiating position with Richfield, and one respondent suggested that we should connect to Milwaukee Water and, before providing service to Richfield. So those were the results of the survey, and I, if you'd like, I could answer questions on that before moving on to the other component.
Anybody have any questions in regards to the survey?
I guess I have one comment. This is our opportunity to set people straight on how things are done in Germantown, and the question that came up tonight was, I want water and sewer where I live before we extend it to Richfield. And I think we need to address that because that's not how things work.
It was, one of the documents that we did put on the website was a frequently asked questions document, which I developed with some help, with quite a bit of help from others last week. We did try to address that as well, that it's not an either or. It's, expanding sewer and water is an expensive proposition to get the mains in place. At least in the three years since I've been here, the village board has not forced people to connect to sewer or water, and I think that's been the policy for some time. That also makes it more difficult to expand sewer and water to the people who do want it, because it becomes more cost prohibitive. So that is a point that I think we're trying to clarify with folks, that it, that it's not an either or, and the two are, it's not a choice that, well, if we don't do this with Richfield, that then we would be able to provide water and sewer to Germantown, because I believe Trustee Kaminsky is correct, that that's just not the way that it will work financially or from an engineering perspective.
Other questions on the survey? Trustee Wing?
Okay, so, you know, I talked to Steve earlier today about this when I got the results. First of all, the results show the majority of people oppose this, around 55% to 45%. But when they're taking this survey, you know, where's their information? Well, we've provided information before the survey that they can read. There's frequently asked questions and several reports. Some of the reports are from Richfield, so they're, you know, positive. The frequently asked questions are all positive. In fact, the first question talks about how well Richfield will help pay for some of this infrastructure. And then when you go to the supporters, they write exactly what the frequently asked question said. Well, I support it because Richfield will help pay. Well, what about our central theme? We had a lot of arguments opposed to it, but none of them are in here. One of our arguments was our water table. You know, it ebbs and flows, but it's generally going down, and we've been told we're going to eventually have to hook up to Milwaukee Water. We're have to hook up to Lake Michigan Water, as other communities around us have done. These are the experts. Well, we want to push that day off as far as possible. So why didn't we tell the residents that, well, you know, if we start giving water to Richfield, that day will come sooner that we have to hook on to Milwaukee? That might have changed their mind. Or what about the main central argument of competition with Richfield? We've competed with them for industry. I have large landowners in my district who are saying, okay, you have the freeway. You can go on the east side, you can go on the west side. If both have water sewer and they're charged the same rates, which it says in here they will be, then what's your choice? Well, Richfield has cheaper taxes, so I'm going to Richfield. So landowners want to know, what is the incentive for industry to build on my land? And there is none if we give away water and sewer. Why wasn't that included in the information packet before somebody makes or fills out a survey? It was a biased survey, in my opinion, and my, the side that I support actually won. They still opposed it, if a biased survey. So I'm wondering, what would happen if we had a survey that actually took, like, former village president Bill Wetterall's letter and put it in there for them to read? Well, read about what the farmers are saying, read about what the landowners are saying, not just the Richfield report and frequently asked questions that are positive. I think the result would be even more overwhelming. So I oppose this. The majority in Germantown oppose it. Even in a biased study, the majority oppose it in both Richfield and Germantown, and three past village presidents oppose it. Anyone that votes for this, I will certainly, certainly make sure that your constituents know that you voted for this, whether it's pamphlets with your picture on it, whatever it is. I will make certain of it.
It's certainly not my intent to get in an argument or back and forth, but just to provide some information, especially about the frequently asked questions document. The way that was developed is, actually, Ms. Tucker and Ms. Zant went through the questions that we had been receiving frequently from the public, and they consolidated those into a series of questions that they gave to me, and I put in, answered those questions the best that I was able. And that's why some questions are in and others are not. I tried to make clear, there were one or two questions where I did make it clear it was my opinion. I felt that was the only way that I could answer, and I tried to differentiate when I was providing my opinion and when I was providing other facts. The one, the one other point, though, and because it does come up frequently, that I think is important to address from a matter of the best facts that we do have that are available, is, you know, again, based on both the hydrologist, who's a PhD professor at UW-Milwaukee, he is, he is under contract with Richfield, and that should be stated for transparency, but also from FOTH Engineering, who's done this analysis for the village of Germantown, and presented, and I'm going to ask our public works director if I misspeak to give me the thumbs down sign, but was also presented to the DNR, who reviewed their findings before the well could be approved, that the well would not have an impact on individual wells. And to the best information that I think we have, the deep aquifer is not going down. And I think it's the impact, the relatively small impact that this particular expansion of water service would have, when you look at, for example, the city of Waukesha or other suburban communities that have gone off of wells that drew on the same deep aquifer and instead are getting water from Lake Michigan. I don't believe that there's a significant impact on this .77 million gallons per day on the depth of the deep aquifer.
I, if I could comment, coming from a subdivision that we live on water, and Germantown broke our aquifer that made our pond spring fed many years ago when they constructed McQuan Road. So the village allowed us to put in a well to keep our pond up to the normal level. Over the past 10 years, we have had to dig deeper and deeper and deeper, and we've spent in the last two years $25,000 as a subdivision, just so we can get water to feed our pond. The reason being, the village of Germantown has taken all of the water, and we're as deep as we can possibly go. That is straight from the well company. I'm concerned that we're going to be having to go to Milwaukee a lot sooner than we anticipated.
If I could suggest, I think our public works director could talk about the differences in the wells and the different aquifers that some of the wells draw, and I think it's important to have that, that everybody have that information.
I think we need to differentiate between a shallow and a deep well. So wells filed and settled in the village, we're off of Western, behind shallow wells as Gales Well. They're on the same shallow aquifer. Those two wells pump the most water of all wells in the village and maintain a level of sufficient depth and volume for those to pump. Excuse me. All residential wells are going to be in that shallow aquifer, within the 300 to 500 foot, 600 foot depth. Below that, through about 500 foot layer of sandstone, is where the deep aquifer starts. And the deep aquifer well is going to be about 1,600 feet deep. You'll never go there for a residential well. That layer between the two aquifers is sealed. Even though we drill through it, there's a casing put through it, and it's grouted with cement grout and sealed, and televised and verified that it's sealed.
But isn't it, isn't it true that we're told that even that deep aquifer eventually, with continued expansion, that we will have to go to Milwaukee Water?
I've never heard that in the time I've been here.
All right, Zabel, you want to talk about that? Are you, Zabel, you want to talk about that?
I'm just telling you, I have never been told that. I haven't been, I've been given reports, told reports from wells, people are engineer, that the actual, that deep aquifer over time is actually recharging itself, and the elevation is actually raising instead of going down.
The elevation is coming back. About five years ago, past water superintendent were after it because the elevations were dropping. They were talking about lowering one of our deep wells to go down a little bit deeper in the water because the water on top was different. It was coming in a little bit different, so we were going to be lowering the pumps in one of our deep wells. The water table has come back. I think Richfield has found that too, that even though they test all the individual wells, because they had a problem with the individual families and the waters were dropping, within the last couple of years, our tables have started to come back to different. But if you read Southeast Regional Planning Studies on Water and Subwater deal, the recommendations to everybody is eventually they have to go to Lake Michigan because of tables that our waters are not going to be there.
Well, we just did well three, two years ago. A year and a half ago, we actually raised the well and took off some of the casing-
Right.
-because we didn't have to have our pumps so deep. That's in the deep aquifer.
Right.
So if the water's going down, we'd be having to lower our pumps and not raise our pumps up.
But that's what I'm saying. About five years ago, six years ago, the past water superintendent and us were telling us we had to start thinking about lowering them. And the last years or so, the amount of rain up north, that aquifer is fed from northern Wisconsin. So-
So you're saying it's going down, or you're saying it's going up?
It was going down. Now it's on its way back up again.
Okay, that's what they're saying.
But there was a point, and at that point in time, we were, they were talking here, that we would, he was asking us to consider going out and tying into water in the drafting area and trying to bring water back to us. He said to do it in other well. And we told him we weren't going to do that.
Milwaukee water to us is always an option because our sewage goes back to Milwaukee.
Right. So it's something we can do. But the problem, the other problem we have with the deep water, and what we don't know until we sink the well, is what type of radium we have. The wells that we've done in this area have been low in radium. The wells up there by, in the industrial part, it's a little bit higher in radium. Now, as we get farther to the west, that radium, does it increase or decrease? We don't know until we tap through it.
Exactly. Side on the heart to answer. Is that a question I would like to answer there?
And you don't know what type of treatment you're going to have to do with it, because you don't want to be like, as we're pointing out, Waukesha, trying to go out and getting water from Lake Michigan, because it isn't the fact that they're running out of water, the water is very high in radium in that area. So that's why they're going to Lake Michigan. But we don't know until we drill that well.
That's any well, Art, any deep well.
I thought the question was, the answering was, "Is the aquifer depleted or increasing in height?"
It's a very original question. Yeah. Now, you see, all the studies that are done in Southeast, if you read their books, they recommend that the, the sand wells have dropped quite a bit, and even they started to come back. But according to them, those, like you say, the three main wells that we have are all in the lower sand elevation. Those have dropped, and all of a sudden they're coming back because of the amount of rain we've had in the last couple of years. But if it ever gets to the point that we take out more, we take out some heavy water users, who knows?
If, if, and when?
Exactly.
If, if, and when?
Yeah. Speculation.
So why compete with ourselves? And just the easiest way to find out if we're going to go into closed session is put the most on the floor that we do not supply Richfield with sewer and water and see what happens.
I don't think we're at a point to put that out there yet, Art. Until we do go into closed session, you can come back out into public session at that time and decide that.
I don't think we need to supply it. That's it.
Yeah.
Why go through it if I don't think we have to?
Because there might be information that you're not aware of, or that be brought forward that may change somebody's mind. Not yours, but somebody's.
The second update that I could provide to the village board is an update on the negotiations. And I guess, in particular, one of the things that has been coming up a lot from the public is looking for more specifics about the cost-sharing arrangement. And that is something that we have been working on with the village of Richfield. I'll say that, and I do have some more specific information, but one of the things that we've been working through in, as a part of the negotiation, is trying to create a cash flow, a cost-sharing arrangement that meets the cash flow needs of both of the communities as well. And I will say that I think one of the options that Richfield is looking for to financing their upfront expenses is tax increment district financing. And the position that we've been looking at from the village is that those upfront costs that we would not be incurring for our own purposes would need to be paid for upfront by the village of Richfield, so that they were in essence taking on the risk associated with those costs, and that that was not being taken on by Germantown residents. So having said that, the proposal that Richfield has made from a cost-sharing perspective is that they would provide the funding for sewer, water, and road reconstruction of Rockfield Road from Gateway Crossing to the border of Richfield. At this point, our preliminary engineering estimate is that that would cost about $1.4 million. I want to qualify that by saying that that's a very preliminary estimate. We haven't done a lot of soil borings or drilling up there to know what kind of rock is available or is around that we would have to go through. But that is, that seems to make the most sense from a cash flow perspective, and that would be an area where otherwise Germantown would probably not be looking to extend sewer and water for a longer period of time until there was a way to finance that. The connection for sewer and water would be made at Rockfield Road underneath the highway, and then Richfield would be responsible for all of the infrastructure improvements on their side of the border. In addition to that, they would be paying for their share of the additional costs, the incremental costs of the tower and the booster station improvements that we're working on at this point. The village would, as we have been planning related to tax increment District 8 and utilizing grant funds that we've received for Holy Hill Road, would then be responsible for the construction of sewer and water and repaving of Holy Hill Road. And at this point, that's where we are in the negotiations. And I guess, rather than taking questions on that in open session, I thought that was information that was appropriate for both the village board and the public to have. But if there are, is direction back to me and the village attorney regarding negotiations, and that should probably take place under closed session.
Questions? No questions?
Well, I, I've talked to Steve about this earlier. Since Richfield provided experts that have made the claim that this won't affect anybody's well in the area, I think it'd be safe to put in a provision that if somebody's well runs dry, that Richfield will dig it deeper, or hook them up, or take care of the resident, because we've had wells in that area that have been problematic. So if we build this well and neighbors in the area, their well goes dry, they want to know what we're going to do. We sit there and we say here, the experts say it's not going to happen, it's not going to happen. Let's back it up. If it happens, Richfield repairs the well.
It's not just Richfield's expert that's saying that. FOTH Engineering is saying it as well.
I know. So we should be able to back it up. We should be able to tell the residents that this added capacity of water, that we're going to take care of their wells.
Do I misunderstand? The shallow well is different from the deep well. So we cannot be affecting shallow wells like this.
Right. So then we'll have no problem with the purpose.
No, we'd have no reason to do it. Because anybody with a, I could have a well problem because of whatever, the shallow is different, and I might have one next year.
You could have a shift.
Yeah. You can't, you can't, you can't hold somebody responsible for something they're not responsible for. It makes no sense.
Well, yeah.
Because the deep well is below the dolomite, which is a thick cap of rock.
But if you read the expert's opinion, he says, "Under certain conditions, there is problems that can occur."
I don't mean to interrupt, but I do think we talked about things to negotiate for, or direction to staff about what to negotiate for, that would be, I would recommend that we go to closed session for that discussion.
Let's do that. I think we need closed session.
One more.
That is not even on the agenda, trustee Zabel, and we've already voted to go into closed session.
Yeah, thank you, Art.
Let the newer trustees see some of the tactics that are going on here against Art. I would like also, yeah, I am.
First of all, I don't care for that. There's nothing against Art. It's more or less against his comments. You have been more divisive in regards to your accusations of staff and your accusations beyond that, which are more thoughtful than what anything has been said to Art. In most respect, and I have high respect for Art and treat him as such, as I do for you, but you've already have insulted staff to say that they've created a survey that is slanted, where all information that they could get, let me finish, that they could get is public record on Plan Commission. If they want to read Bill Wetterall's letter, go to the Plan Commission or go to the last meeting when it was submitted. It's public record. It's there, available to be seen. But I do not believe that staff created a survey or gave information out there for purposes of trying to get people to vote in favor of or show a survey result in favor of this item getting water to Richfield. That is your opinion. That is your opinion.
Yeah, right, and I'm entitled to my opinion.
That is a wrong accusation, and the point of it was information presented. So I have a problem with that more than what you say that we're mistreating Art with. And there is no mistreatment of trustee Zabel.
When you said to Zabel, when you said to Zabel, "You can't make that motion now", we've already decided we're going into closed session. Terry looked and said, "Yeah, there, huh?" Well, that's inappropriate.
It's not on the agenda.
I know, but your response was inappropriate, but now you're trying to make me inappropriate.
As long as we're sitting here talking about what's not appropriate, it's also not appropriate for a board member to bully other board members by saying, "If you vote for this, I am going to put out brochures with your picture on it and go door to door." That is inappropriate behavior for a professional board member. I'm sorry.
That's politics.
Might I just suggest that we focus what's on the agenda and keep the personal attacks on both sides to a minimum? Let's focus on what we're supposed to be doing.
So are we ready to go into closed session?
Yes.
All right, then I would ask, give us five minutes for the boardroom to clear and for the audiovisual people to shut down. There is a possibility of going back into open session.
We will have to leave the audio video on for trustee Miller and I think community development staff, but they can close that out to members of the public so that they are able to participate.